So, welcome everyone. I want to get started with tonight's regular meeting of the Larkspur City Council for Wednesday, October 4th, 2017, and we are right on time at 6:30 PM here in the Larkspur City Council Chamber. So if we could start with the roll call.
Councilmember Two.
Here.
Councilmember Way.
Here.
Councilmember Morrison.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hillmer.
Here.
And Mayor Haroff.
I am here. And for those who are able, let's please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, with that, we will move on to Agenda Item Number Three, which is Public Comment. This is the time for members of the public to address the City Council regarding items that are not on the agenda. And I just lost my thing, so I don't have to do that. Items not on the agenda and we will thank you. Or that are listed as part of the consent calendar. Please approach the podium and state your name and where you live. Individuals have three minutes to speak. Five minutes if representing a group. The council is not permitted to take action on matters that are not on the agenda. We may engage in a limited discussion, refer the matter to staff or direct staff to place the matter on our future agenda. We may also add the matter to the agenda if it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature. With that, we will go ahead with Public Comment, and we have our first commenter. Please.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Rundown, and I live in Greenbree on South Aliseo Drive. And my daughters and I are here today because I just started letting them walk to school this year. They're in fourth grade and they go to Basij Elementary School. And we've run into the problem of cars not being very mindful when they're crossing the intersection on South Aliseo Drive and Bonner Road. And what we see is that even though the girls have been taught to make good eye contact with drivers, the drivers often don't notice when they're turning left on that road. And their light is green and the walk sign is also on. And so what we were talking about as a good solution is possibly having a cross guard there in the mornings for the kids. And when I mentioned it to some of my neighbors on next door, they also said that because it's a walking path that goes through there, many people have run into that problem outside of just school hours. And then my daughter also wanted to talk about it a little bit.
Please, thank you.
She changed her mind.
No, that's okay. We'd encourage her to do it.
Yeah, and so, you know, we were interested in finding out how we would go about possibly getting funding for a crossing guard, or even a discussion around whether we could change how the light works, and so that when there's a green light for pedestrians to go, that there's not also a green light for cars to go at the same time, to help protect our kids and all of our neighbors on the walking path there.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public who would like to offer a comment? Cindy?
Cindy Winter, Greenbree. I've been communicating a little bit with Jennifer, and it is a dangerous intersection. It's especially dangerous at commute hours and for children. But it's kind of iffy all day long. I've lived there since 1983, and I know it well. It could probably use a crossing guard. I think the green light for pedestrians only is a good idea. TAM determines who, which jurisdiction gets the crossing guards, and they're all out of money for another guard now, and money is tight. However, there is Senate Bill One, and Wendy Callens told me it can't be used for crossing guards, but the language is decidedly ambivalent, in my opinion. I'll ask TAM about it on Monday. Even if TAM reads it one way, there's no way that doesn't mean that Larkspur can't interpret it in its own fashion. And I think it might benefit TAM to be a bit more generous, but that's a discussion for another forum. And I know that Larkspur has a lot of needs for the SB One money. However, that intersection is bad enough that it might be worth having some traffic counts made, or some pedestrian counts and bicycle counts at the busiest times. And maybe even some of the parents could make these counts, but they would not be seen as a totally reliable party because they're not used to doing that. So, I think I would ask Julian about those green lights. That might be simpler. Thank you.
Okay, that's very helpful. Thank you very much, Cindy. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to offer a comment? Please.
Hi, it's a different topic. Hi, good evening, councilmembers. I'm Catherine Pike. I'm a resident of Creekside for the past 20 years, and I'm co-chair of the Friends of the Larkspur Library. I'm here to express my disappointment at the removal of the sign for the new, for the new library. This was a sign that I spotted about two years ago. I'm semi-retired from a 30-year career in philanthropy, and I was looking for a volunteer effort where I could have some, perhaps make somewhat of a difference. And this seemed like something that a lot of us could get excited about. Less than a month ago, the Friends held an event in a private home, and we had 27 people. We had members of the Friends, the Foundation Board, and many, many volunteers for the library. It's clear to us that there's a lot of interest in the new library, and we didn't even intend to talk about it at that meeting. It was a tea, simply to thank volunteers. But it turned into a lively discussion about the fate of the, the future, let's say, of the new library. So, the Friends would like to urge you to update and replace that sign, and thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you for that comment. We appreciate that. Is there any other public comment, please?
Hi, I'm Kathleen Gulf from Larkspur, and I'm here presenting 113 signatures for people who use Piper Park. We didn't work very hard to get these signatures, and then people were volunteering to sign them. And the reason we want, we want a garbage can in the back of the park. We've called, we called Park and Rec. A lot of people called at different times initially, and they said, "Call Public Works." We called Public Works, and they returned our messages, and we had a lot of different answers, and one was, "It doesn't get enough use back there. The garbage company won't go around and pick it up, even though they do make a loop." The can needed to be reassigned, and that it wasn't too far for people to walk to the other garbage cans. Well, this group of people would like the can re-reassign because we need one in the back. And I have pictures that, and copies, that I'm going to give to the clerk, so if you're interested, you could look at them. I went and counted 37 garbage cans at the park, two dumpsters, and 33 of them, here's the police station and the tennis courts here. I know it's hard to see, but she'll have copies. So between the baseball diamond and on the other side of the police station, there are 33 cans, including one each on the dog park and around the rest areas, the kids' playground, tennis courts and everything, and two dumpsters. So then when you get into the field, you've got three, one over here, one over here, one kind of where they play cricket, and one on the opposite side of that. I apologize for hurting. But this is where you want it, in the far end, where people make the loop, and they're coming back from the dock when they're picnicking. People are drinking water bottles, and they're finishing the water bottles, and they don't want to carry it. And so, a lot of comments were, "I thought we had one back here." "Where did it go?" Or, "Can I buy one?" And people were kind of happy to sign. So, that's my two cents, and I have all the signatures here in copies.
Okay, great. You just leave that with Jamie? That would be terrific. Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to offer a comment during this period? Seeing none, we will close the public comment period, and we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Four, which is Approval of the Consent Calendar. Is there anyone who wants to take a matter off the consent calendar for consideration?
No.
Anyone from the public who would like to request that? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll make that motion to approve the consent calendar.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the consent calendar is approved. And we will move on to Agenda Item Number Five, which is the City Manager's Oral Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. At first, I wanted to address the family that came down about South Aliseo and Bonner Road. In addition to the comments already heard from another speaker, I would encourage you to make sure you talk to the school, because they all have a much more powerful request than we will for a crossing guard. They have much more influence, and there are volunteer crossing guards in addition to the paid ones. So start there, and they'll know how to plug that request in. The other thing is, if any resident ever has a concern about traffic in an intersection, you can put in a request to Public Works, and it'll cycle through a process to be considered, to be evaluated. So, I'll draw it to the attention of the Public Works staff, but if you, if you want to contact them tomorrow, they'll, they'll take a look at that. A couple announcements, councilmembers, to be aware of. One is, we continue to get requests to do meetings with neighborhoods and community members about Measure B, and I just once again want to extend that I am available, and Public Works Director Julian Skinner are available, as I know are many of the council members, to come out. No group is too big or too small for us to come talk to about Measure B and our goal of repairing all the roads in Larkspur. So, please let us know. Folks got their voter information booklets over the weekend, and can anticipate getting their actual ballot next week. Getting a lot of calls in the last few days and other contacts about coyotes. It's one of those periods, again, where we see coyote activity. I gather that the young pups are becoming teenagers, and teenagers start to get brave and start to roam, and according to the folks who understand coyotes, that's why we're seeing more of them. It's also getting darker earlier, and so they start to come out a little earlier. There is a webpage, a web, part of our website, there's a page. It's www.cidelarkspur.org/coyote-awareness, coyote awareness. And if you just type that into the search engine on the homepage, you can find it as well, coyote awareness. There's a video of a joint meeting we conducted with Corder Madera last year, where we had a number of experts on coyote behavior come in and talk about how residents can cope with coyotes coming in their neighborhood and deter that behavior. We've had some inquiries about why we don't trap, capture, and relocate coyotes. That's actually against the law in the state of California. And if you watch the video, you also find out that trapping and relocating or killing coyotes will actually increase their population, because the pack then needs to replace the member, and that ends up happening exponentially. So I encourage folks to watch it. It was very eye-opening to me to hear about that, and I think folks will find that very informative. There's a lot of good information about how you can reduce their interest in your, your home and in your neighborhood, in the video, so I encourage folks to watch it. You had a speaker ask about the sign at the community facility parcel. I was going to address that as well. Not only was the information on the sign dated, and we've had confusion over the years because there were some dates on that sign, and people tried to show up to meetings that didn't exist anymore. But that particular sign wasn't constructed to stand on the site forever. It wasn't really built for that, and it was time to take it down. I've been under the assumption, as the process for the library, design and fundraising resumes, that there would be some folks, far more creative than me, that would suggest what a new sign ought to look like, that would be attractive and draw people's attention. We had folks, I guess, who, who thought it suggested we were going to do something else with the parcel, and that certainly is not the case. And then lastly, I wanted to let the council and the community know that on October 11th, I apologize, I didn't get the date, but on October 11th, the county is hosting a joint meeting with Larkspur and Corder Madera to discuss the North-South Greenway Path Project, which is a bike project over on the other side of the freeway. It involves two segments. The north segment involves getting over Corder Madera Creek, and the alignment involves Redwood Highway north of the pedestrian overcrossing. The southern part is a proposal to send a bike path out along the Smart Rideaway, and the county wants to have a, has set things up, and we've agreed to participate in a joint meeting, and the, give me the date, sorry, it's October 11 at, apologize, my.
Relying on electronics.
Yeah, I know. The meeting's at 6:30 to 8:30, and it'll be at the Central Marine Police Authority. So, encourage folks who are interested in that project to attend.
And.
That's it.
For the mayor, can I ask a clarification about that? Will that be led by TAM or by the joint cities together?
My impression is the county is the lead agency, if that's hosting this particular workshop.
Okay.
I imagine TAM will be present, since they've shepherded much of the planning for the project.
So more than, more than two of us can show up if we're there as community members?
Yes.
Thank you.
Through the mayor?
Yeah, no, please.
The county is the lead agency on the environmental analysis and review for the project, so this is part of that process. TAM will be present, and Larkspur certainly encourage to comment.
Okay, anything else on the City Council?
That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Or, City Manager's Report. With that, we'll close Agenda Item Number Six and move on to Agenda Item, I'm sorry, Agenda Item Number Five, and move on to Agenda Item Number Six, Council Members Oral Reports and Comments. Do we have any reports? Councilmember Morrison, please.
Dean, you forgot to mention about the Larkspur staff picnic, which was a huge success. We have a wonderful staff, as we all know, and very bright, dedicated, and that helps make our city run as well as it does, so thank you. It was really fun. I know that Dan Hillmer joined me on that one. Also, I still get comments from the, from people regarding about the bomb scare at Redwood. The Corder Madera Police Authority, along with the Redwood staff, you guys worked really well together, so thank you. I did talk to the police chief, who said that there still needs to be a few things discussed and improved upon, but overall, they've got a great relationship with the school, so that was really exciting, how well that was handled. I talked about being on the MCC, MC, Homeless Steering Policy Committee, along with on the Review and Rank Board. So that is grants from HUD, and that helps get it, get homeless population off the streets into, into a rehab situation. So I just attended the Community Development Block Grant, which is also grants from HUD, and that is for housing, to keep low-income individuals housed. So the situation here is Larkspur, there's a grant application coming up, and we really don't have anybody from Larkspur that's applied. So I'm going to reach out to a few. You know, we've got a few low-income houses. We have Edgewater Place One and Two, Drake's Way, and Larkspur Isle, and I'll reach out to them to see if they need any rehabilitation or anything fixing. We've got the Brain Injury Network. We can reach out to them. Yes. So anyway, we're really wanting to have, find people to apply for these grants, and you can call the county, and the county has, has staff that helps you fill out the application, so it's an easy process. So if you have any ideas, please pass it by me.
Are those grants for individuals or for organizations?
Organizations, nonprofit.
Good.
But money's out there. Let's, let's make sure Larkspur gets some of it. All right.
Thank you.
And the Chamber of Commerce asked me to throw out some dates.
Oh, yeah, get track some dates. I've got them, and you go ahead.
Do you want?
No, no, you got them, because I can't make them all.
All right. So we have a Spirit of Marin Award, which is happening October the 6th. We also have a ribbon cutting and mixer. Everyone's invited to come. On October the 12th, it's at Albor Medical Solutions, which is in North Magnolia. We also have a Business Citizen of the Year Luncheon, if you're invited, October the 27th, from 11:30 to 1:00 at Perry's. And last but not least, we have the Holiday Mixer at Bonner Center on December the 7th, from 5:00 to 7:00. You're all welcome to come. Thank you.
And, and, October 12th, is that a 5:00 to 7:00 also?
It is.
Okay.
And I'll be there for that.
Good, I'll be with, I'll be there, too. Thank you.
And I just want to echo the comments about the Chamber of Commerce events. They're terrific. They're a lot of fun, and it's important for us all to all reinforce the wonderful people who are members of the Congress, members of the chamber, and participate in their events, so I look forward to it. Councilmember Chu, anything?
You know that a couple weeks ago, I sent you an email, but I'm going to repeat it again for the public, because we have a few members in the audience, coincidentally, that happen to be here tonight. But, you know, we've had the Twin Cities Coalition for Healthy Youth for probably, in our seventh year now, and Lori Dubin is in the audience. She was one of the people that put it together way back when, when she was at Redwood, and brought it to the attention of Todd, and we got, ended up getting a local grant that was about $60,000 per year. That lasted for about three years, and each year it started to go down, so we decided that the best thing to do is try and apply for a grant with drug-free communities with the federal government, and that's $125,000 per year for five years, so that's over half million dollars. So, sitting with Lori tonight is also our program director from the Twin Cities side, Linda Han, and she was instrumental, along with Bridget Clark from the Ross Valley Coalition, along with Sue Elliott, who, you know, basically helped put that grant together. And, you know, we spent a lot of time last year trying to put it together. We didn't get the grant, but this year it was kind of repackaged, and we actually got it.
Congratulations.
And we think in large part it was because we are now part of a larger service area. It's not just the Twin Cities, but everything all the way up to Fairfax. Toby Miller, our sergeant here, he was a staff representative for the Central Marine Police, Police being one of the coalition members, so thank you, everyone. Great job.
Great, thank you for that report. That's terrific. Councilmember Way?
I just have two things. Last week, I attended the kickoff meeting for Public Works and the Park and Recreation Department for the Park Entrance Signage Program that we're putting together. It was at Central Marine Police Authority, very good signage and very good presentation, not a lot of attendance. So I would love to encourage people when they get, see that this is happening, and there'll be another public meeting about it, to come and see what the opportunities are for helping to create and design the signage that will go into our parks. And I think there will also be a link on the website where you can submit your interest and your ideas. And then last, I went last night to the San Anselmo City Council Debate, just to check out what they were going to say and talk about. There's five members of the San Anselmo City Council running, and I was very interested in any conversation about flood control, and any conversation about economic development in the Ross Valley, so it was quite interesting, and I'll leave it at that.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. And I'll just briefly mention one thing that I did on September 22nd, which I think was after our last City Council meeting. I attended a mostly full-day retreat for the MCE Clean Energy Board. We do this once a year, and get all the board members together, along with key staff members, talk about the year passed and the year ahead. This was a particularly special year, because we welcomed representatives from the County of Contra Costa and various Contra Costa municipalities, who have now signed on to be participants with MCE Clean Energy. That's a big deal for this organization, which started eight, nine years ago, I think, and was completely focused around Marin County. It has expanded over time into Napa, Napa County, to portions of Solano County, and now it is about to essentially encompass the entirety of Contra Costa County. The reason that that's a big deal is it will essentially double the service area of MCE Clean Energy, and make MCE one of the largest community choice aggregation energy providers in the state of California. It was the first. It continues to play a leadership role within this process, and it's kind of intimidating to be a part of such a successful organization. Projections now for revenues in the next year or two, once Contra Costa is fully integrated into the organization, there are projected to be about $450 million of revenues, which is an order of magnitude above where it was when I first started as a member of the board four years ago. So it's quite impressive. Whether it will continue to grow at that rate, who knows? There are other community choice aggregation entities that are popping up all over the state of California, the city and county of San Francisco, several on the peninsula, a number down in Southern California. And the projections are that by the year 2025, 75% of retail energy customers throughout the state of California, 75%, will be served by community choice aggregation entities in lieu of the existing independent investor-owned utilities like PG&E. That will be a dramatic change in retail energy markets in the state of California. Create opportunities for us locally to play an influential, influential role in how that plays out. It's a big deal. At the same time, we're facing a number of challenges, primarily legislative, but also to some extent with the California Public Utilities Commission, which is still trying to figure out how to regulate us, because they, for the most part, don't at this point, and that's a, that's a challenge for them. So we had a very busy season legislatively, particularly at the end of the legislative session, with various amendments to existing pending bills being introduced that were generally intended to pose new challenges to the growth and success of CCAs in California. The good news is that I believe none of those efforts succeeded and got across the governor's desk. So, that's good, but we should expect continuing regulatory challenges for this transformative change in California retail energy markets, and I'm glad we are having the opportunity to play a role in that. That's my speech. So, I think we will conclude Councilmember Oral Reports with that, and move on to Item Number Seven on the agenda, which is Public Hearing, Consideration and Possible Adoption of an Interim Ordinance Establishing a Temporary Prohibition on Medical and Non-Medical Cannabis Related Businesses from Locating and Operating in the City of Larkspur, pending the analysis and consideration of new zoning amendments and other regulations appropriate for this new industry to become effective immediately. And with that, can we have a staff report?
Thank you, Mayor Haroff. Good evening, everyone. Just a quick background, the council has discussed this matter on February 15th in 2017, and September 6th, 2017. During those meetings, we presented you with a lot of information regarding AUMA, the original regulations regulating and permitting marijuana, personal and commercial, and then as well the MERCSA, the Medicinal and Adult Use Cannabis Regulations and Safety Act, which were adopted under Senate Bill 94, which sort of consolidated all the regulations for commercial and medical marijuana businesses. These laws do permit local discretion over the various personal and commercial activities that have been legalized. However, the state is scheduled to begin adopting, issuing licenses for commercial businesses after January 1st, 2018. Therefore, the city must adopt regulations before the state if they're going to be considered. During both hearings, the council was presented with a range of information and questions to assist in determining if you want to permit commercial operations in Larkspur or regulate personal cultivation. At the conclusion of the discussion, you determined that the additional time was necessary to undertake an investigation. I'm not used to wearing glasses when I read. This is uncomfortable.
You and me both.
Additional information was, or time and information was necessary to undertake an investigation into the impacts and benefits of the commercial cannabis industry before permanent regulations can be adopted. And you also determined that issues raised regarding personal outdoor cultivation warranted further public outreach prior to adoption of permanent regulations. The council then directed staff to prepare an interim ordinance to temporarily prohibit all medical and non-medical cannabis-related businesses from locating in the city of Larkspur. This direction exempted deliveries into Larkspur by a licensed commercial facility that's located outside of your jurisdiction. Staff has prepared the requested interim ordinance for your consideration. The council should note that this ordinance may be adopted by a fourth, fifth vote and will remain in effect for 45 days. Subject to additional public noticing, the ordinance can then be extended for an additional 22 months and 15 days. 22 months and 15 days. If adopted, the staff anticipates rescheduling the matter for an extension at the November 15th council meeting. With regard to personal cultivation, staff will complete additional public outreach and bring this matter back to the council in November for adoption of permanent regulations addressing private cultivation also. And that concludes my report. We do recommend adoption of the interim ordinance.
Okay. Thank you very much for that staff report. Are there any questions from members of the city council for staff? Please.
So Kristin, I was going to ask you, why 45-day for moratorium? And then so can you repeat that? So it's 45 days and then we come back and have another discussion? And why can't we just say 22 months from now? Why?
Do you want to answer that? Okay.
State law provides two procedures for adopting this type of urgency ordinance, which is often referred to as a moratorium. The one that we thought, since the council had given direction and we had a little bit of time, the one that we opted for lays out an initial period of 45 days and then an additional 22 months and 15 days up to. It's not, you're not required to take the full amount of time, but you have that much time. So it's basically just a matter of state law, that that's why we're doing it this way. Our expectation would be to come back within 45 days with an, with a, with some update on the work that's been done in the interim period, but a request that the council adopt another ordinance to extend the moratorium for an additional period of time, because we don't expect to be able to complete the amount of work that's necessary within the initial 45-day period. And also, as discussed in the staff report, one of the things that we wanted to be able to do was to see how things play out as other communities allow these businesses to start up and figure, and for them to learn some lessons and us to take those lessons and come back to you with a set of proposals that will take advantage of their experiences.
Thanks, Kai.
Any other questions from the council?
I do. And Kai, also to that, is the fourth, fifth vote required? Is that also California state law?
It is.
All right.
Anything further? Nope. See none? Is there anyone from the public that would like to offer a comment on this matter? And again, we're going to keep all comments limited to three minutes. And if you could please state your name and where you live.
Good evening. My name is Lori Dubin. I'm a longtime Larkspur resident of 18 years, also a mother of three children, the youngest of which is a sophomore at Redwood High School. I'm also, as Councilmember Chu mentioned, the founder of the Twin Cities Coalition for Healthy Youth, which is now the Coalition Connection, as well as Be the Influence, which is a teen parenting program. It's in 10 schools throughout Marin and San Francisco, including Redwood High School, and it's comprised of several thousand parents. I strongly support at least a one-year moratorium to determine whether marijuana dispensaries should be allowed in Larkspur. As you know, any regulation needs to be comprehensive. It will be complex. For that reason, most cities in California are grappling with this issue and are unlikely to allow operating recreational dispensaries anytime soon. That was in the San Francisco Chronicle last, last week. Larkspur should be no exception. A moratorium will not interfere with resident access to marijuana, as home deliveries are very easy to come by. All you have to do is check the weed maps for evidence of that, if you have any doubt. Our concern, this is both Be the Influence and the Twin Cities Coalition, with allowing any marijuana dispensaries even after a moratorium expires, has nothing to do with legalization of recreational marijuana for adult use. It's solely about the impact of legalization on youth. In states where legalization has occurred, such as Washington and Colorado, the normalization of marijuana has resulted in a decreased perception of harm. That in turn has led to increases in use among teens. And our rates here in Marin of teen alcohol, marijuana, and other drug use, specifically at Redwood and the Tam District, are already among the highest in the state, and these are pre-legalization numbers. In states with legalization, there's also been a dramatic increase in traffic accidents and fatalities due to driving while under the influence of marijuana. Teens in particular have a false notion that it's safer to drive while stoned because they're, quote, slower, but the evidence shows that both are dangerous. Today's weed is not the marijuana that we may have tried in high school. The product is far more powerful with edibles and concentrates, which is exactly what's going to be sold in dispensaries. So for this reason, emergency rates have skyrocketed in states like Colorado and Washington. And finally, having these drug dispensaries is inconsistent with the character of Larkspur, I believe, and its family-friendly nature. It's why so many young families continue to move here, as we did 18 years ago, not to mention the traffic, loitering, and crime that will likely occur. So again, my objections are not to adult use of marijuana, although I got to say, I strongly believe that the residents who voted for Prop 64 did so to decriminalize marijuana and not to approve of dispensaries in our neighborhoods. Be the Influence and the Twin Cities Coalition is happy to be a resource to the city as you continue to grapple with this issue. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to provide a comment on this matter? Please state your name and where you live.
I'm Linda Hen, and I live in Kent Field. But as Councilmember Chu said, I work for the Twin Cities Coalition for Healthy Youth, which is now called the Coalition Connection in conjunction with the Ross Valley Healthy Community Collaborative, working together to reduce underage drinking and drug use. Yet I shop, eat, run, and visit Larkspur daily. I consider daily Larkspur my town, and I care what happens in Larkspur. Marijuana has been voted to be legal, and it should be decriminalized. Our jails are overburdened with victims who should not be imprisoned for possession of marijuana. Other states have legalized marijuana, and the results are still coming in about the impact on the communities, both positive and negative. But what we do know is there is significant risk to youth in our communities, both increasing access, reducing perception of harm, while having insufficient regulation over the products. The marijuana of today is very different from days of yore. THC used to have a content of, was about 2% to 5% in my day, and today the average is 20% THC, going up as high as 90% with concentrates and oils. Edibles are a large concern due to the lack of regulation in content levels and serving sizes. Marketing of these products is not regulated closely enough to diminish harm. Our youth are at risk. Their perception of harm is already low, and making it legal will only add to, to that perception, driving it lower. The developing youth brain is at risk, and marijuana addiction and treatment are on the rise. Currently, 25% of freshmen and 43% of juniors at Redwood believe they are slight to no harm in smoking marijuana once or twice a week. 27% of freshmen and 57% of juniors have tried marijuana. And 80% of freshmen and 83% of juniors find marijuana fairly easy or very easy to access. The regulatory process has not sufficiently met the needs to protect consumers and communities. More information is needed. That is why you're recommending the moratorium, and I strongly support that. I recommend that Larkspur wait, gather more information, and do what is best for all community members. If you act too quickly, it could jeopardize the tranquil, family-friendly town that you are fortunate to enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak on this topic?
Good evening. I'm Julia Ritter. I'm a Larkspur resident of about 15 years and a mother of three children, live in Heather Gardens, a former school board trustee. And first and foremost, I want to thank you for your service in dealing with these issues. As I've become more educated, I've come to understand that Larkspur, like many government organizations, are in the, are in a process and that the step before you tonight to adopt this interim ordinance is a step towards a longer process of exercising local control in response to the passage of Prop 64 and the state's legislation requiring local governments to take some action or be ruled by the governances of the state. So I understand the position you're in. I did have an opportunity to read the staff interim ordinance and wholeheartedly support their recommendation that you take this step this evening to, to pass the ordinance, to adopt the ordinance. Again, as a step towards, in, in my view, as I know that you are here to collect public feedback, towards a permanent ban of marijuana-related sales in Larkspur. I supported the ban against medical marijuana dispensaries when Larkspur adopted that ordinance, and I would extend that personally as a resident, as a mom, as a concerned citizen, to the, the banning of all medical, of all marijuana sales in Larkspur. And I just wanted to cite, as the staff report, as the, I'm sorry, as the ordinance states, as written now, that it cites many of the values that I think we all can agree on, the threats to public safety, to changing the character of our town, and really, first and foremost for me, to our public safety, both for our community members at large and for our youth, for all of the reasons that Linda and Lori have already articulated. So again, thank you for your service, and I look forward to seeing this process move forward in a way that really benefits our town. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much for those comments. We appreciate them. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak? Please, please approach the podium. And again, state your name and where you live. Could you please hand anything to the city clerk, please? Close, but not quite.
All right. Fair enough. Dr. Ron Strauss, Larkspur resident for the past 12 years. At the last city council meeting, I voiced my serious concerns regarding the potential for misinterpreting the voter's decision to decriminalize marijuana in California as a vote for participation in its commercialization. It's important for the city of Larkspur to avoid being an active participant in big marijuana's greed and plan to create as broad a market as possible. Drugs and drug overdoses are one of America's greatest threats, and the rapid commercialization of marijuana is an extension of a progressively more lethal drug culture. The number-one cause of death today in America in men under the age of 50 is not gun homicide, cancer, or automobile accidents, it is drug overdose. And the number-one cause of death today in women in America under the age of 50 is not breast cancer, domestic violence, or accidents, it is drug overdose. More people are dying of drug overdoses in this country right now, today, than at the peak of the AIDS crisis. There is scientific evidence that marijuana is both addictive, especially when used in youth, and a gateway drug to even more dangerous drugs. Maybe that's not your personal experience of it, or maybe it is, but that's what the medical science tells us. We need to base our decisions on rational evidence, not anecdote or alternative facts that people invent when reality does not meet the narrative they'd like to believe. It's frankly up to the city council to recognize the people of Larkspur don't want to participate in the expansion of the marijuana industry and drug culture in general. In the same way that we wouldn't allow new specialty businesses peddling nicotine in the form, look, or taste of candy, we don't want businesses that are doing this with marijuana. The marijuana industry wants to hook our children, just like the tobacco industry wants to hook our children. And I've given you what a quick Google search of images for marijuana edibles, candy nets. Imagine how we next year with even more of this stuff floating around. You heard what our own police chief had to say last meeting about the serious dangers this poses to our community and our children. We want to be clear-eyed about what's going on because we need to protect ourselves and our kids. We want to, we know that it's not what we say, but what we do that influences our kids the most. How can we tell them not to use marijuana, but then turn around and give business licenses to marijuana peddlers? We are not compelled by any law to give these business licenses to marijuana businesses. In fact, it remains against federal law. Other cities and towns will make this mistake. The people of Larkspur don't want to make this mistake. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak on this topic?
I'll make a comment. Kathleen Gulse, and residence of Larkspur since 1974. This is kind of new to me about selling marijuana in Larkspur. Was surprised at this. Agree with all the people that have spoke before, but I was curious about why that sell of medical marijuana has been banned. Because I've been reading a lot about it, because I have friends and neighbors that have had issues as they've been getting older, and they find a lot of relief from medical marijuana. So what's the difference? I know there's a difference between selling marijuana as a retail sales versus medical marijuana, but apparently you've banned that. So I'm curious as to why that was banned, and then this is under consideration. For my time on the council.
I can give you a personal answer.
All I can tell you, this was the decision of the council when it was brought before you.
Yeah, that was 1996, so Jan would have been the only one.
Yeah.
Well, and I can, I mean, just from reconstructing history, when Proposition 15 first legalized, decriminalized use of medical marijuana, cities all over the state, including Larkspur City Council, decided to not allow dispensaries to operate within the city. As was indicated in the staff report, last year, the, the retail sale of cannabis was legalized, and so we're, it's before the council now, so to consider overall whether or not to allow sales of cannabis, which would potentially include both retail and medical. So it's not like they're considering retail, but not medical, the sales would be permitted to anyone, but, and, or if they were permitted at all, just to clarify.
And again, right now, all we're doing is essentially considering an ordinance to preserve the status quo until we sort some of these issues out.
Right. Which is, which is to allow no sales other than deliveries which will be licensed by the state beginning next calendar year.
Okay. Thank you very much for that clarification.
Okay. Thank you very much. No, no, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, great. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to offer a comment? James, go ahead.
James Holmes, Larkspur. The last time that I was here, I pointed out, I showed two front-page articles indicating the vehement opposition of Marin County residents to pot shops. And today, by coincidence, here is another article in today's Chronicle. Pot Shop in Sunset Rejected amid Führer. And it goes on to say that the club, that the board supervises, 9 to 2 vote to deny it was the dramatic finale to a raucous appeal hearing at which dozens of residents joined the conservative Pacific Justice Foundation to block the dispensary. So whenever these come up, they are vigorously rejected by the citizens. And I assume that you have perused the late mail packet, and I noticed that the, it was seven to one of the eight, there were seven to one in, against pot, retail pot stores. And I, I suspect that's indicative of the overall perspective of the, or the views of the city residents as a whole, as are what you hear tonight. So that I would encourage you not only to pass this ordinance, but also not to play cat and mouse for very long with the issue as a whole, but to make it clear as quickly and speedily and permanently as possible that retail pot stores have no place in Larkspur. I do have a technical question about the ordinance. Page three, page three, section four, page three, section four. It says, "While this ordinance is in effect, the city shall process any and all applications for the land uses, development, or building for any of the business activities defined in section two." That's pot stores, basically. But if, but if they're acted upon prior to the expiration, they shall be denied. It's not clear to me why the city should encourage applic, not encourage, should allow applications for the pot stores if there are no standards to process them and denial is required. I think that that simply should not be allowed. So I would question why we have section four. Beyond that, I would just echo the comments of everybody else, and the results as shown by this latest article and many others, I'm sure, that pots, that blocked the pots, retail pot stores.
Okay. Thanks very much for that, James. Sky, I'm assuming that the consideration of applications is driven by just a normal process that we would have to.
It's a case law-created standard where the court, California courts have basically said that during this moratorium period, cities are required to accept and process applications, but not to approve them. And so if, so basically, and they have not done a lot to clarify why they would want a city to process an application when there's no laws in effect to regulate it, but that's what they'd said. And so the general consensus is that what's required of cities is that, you know, they accept the application, process them as much as possible under existing law until new laws are, are adopted. laws are, are adopted subsequent to the moratorium. And once that's done, to act on the, on the application under the laws that are then in effect. So if the council chooses to permit them under some conditions, the application, any application that was submitted would be processed under those. If the council does not, does not permit them, then the application would be denied.
So the bottom line is, if somebody wants to file an application, they're free to do that, but it's not going anywhere as long as the moratorium is in effect.
That's correct.
All right. Thank you very much. Do you have a question?
You know, on that point, it was supposed to, Prop 64 had it as a two-application process. In the absence of any local ordinances, they would be applying through the state. So if we already prohibit any kind of marijuana sales to begin with, then we have no process here, since it's prohibited.
No, you're right that they, they will not be able, they, they, it should be the case that the state will not issue any licenses for any of these businesses as long as the moratorium is in place. But the way that the moratorium law works is that the city is nevertheless compelled under this case law to accept an application, process it to the extent possible. We would effectively, you know, not, they would not be able to get approved because they wouldn't have a state license, so it is a little bit circular, but the state's requirements are different from our requirements under the case law that applies here.
Yeah, but if we prohibit it, we have no application process for them to submit.
If you ultimately prohibit them, then...
No, even now.
Even now, they could submit an application to operate some form, attempt to submit an application for some form of business to attempt to fit it into one of the categories in the zoning ordinance and move forward on that basis. What we, but they would not be able to get an approval because of the moratorium.
Right.
They would also not be able to get one because they wouldn't have the required state licenses, but there, there, so there are multiple reasons, but the, the state should, the state should not be issuing any licenses while the moratorium is in effect.
But would you issue something for business that's illegal?
No, but that's different from processing, the processing an application or accepting an application.
As I said, they're free to submit an application.
Exactly. I mean, it, it is an open question about what kind of an application they would submit, and it's not really worth speculating and theorizing, but that's what, that's what state law requires of us, so we typically include that in moratorium ordinances in order to, to ensure that we've satisfied that requirement.
And just to clarify again, one of the, one of the operative effects of the moratorium is to prevent the, the permissive aspects of state law from kicking in according to the schedule that otherwise would apply. So, you know, we are retaining our control over this process by enacting an ordinance as the staff has proposed.
That's correct.
All right. Anything else?
Well, that answered the question. Thank you, Sky.
Any other questions? Anyone else from the public? I don't necessarily see anyone. So we will bring it back to the council. Is there any further discussion from the council on that, or otherwise, we will entertain a motion?
I'll move the council adopt ordinance. Would you like to make the motion?
No, I'd like to have some more discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Please.
Well, you can put the motion on the table, and we can discuss.
I'll move that the council adopt ordinance ten twenty-one.
All right. Councilmember White, you have a comment?
If we have a second, do we have to go to write to a vote?
No, you can take discussion after.
Ah. I just wanted to reflect on some things in that we've had this conversation now for the last, for two different council meetings, and spent a lot of time really looking at what's going on statewide. I also attended the League of California Cities meeting, two meetings that they had, seminars about Proposition 64. And there is a tremendous amount of uncertainty out there. There's a lot of uncertainty about what the legislators are going to do next year. There's a lot of things floating about new regulations, because it's a pretty poorly, from what I understand, written law for the application to local communities. So when we started this process, I was pretty just, let's go for it attitude, but I haven't changed my mind and decision about a permanent moratorium, but I think we definitely have to do a lot more public process. We really need to reach out to the specific neighborhood that we've identified in our mapping system would be the only appropriate identifiable place, and we haven't done that yet. I think hearing from this community who is representing healthy youth, and they met with me today, is really putting forward some strong arguments, but we need to have the opportunity to hear the arguments from others who have a counter position. And I just don't think we've had enough time to do that. So I just wanted to put that out there, that I'm, I think we still have a lot of work to do as far as hearing what our community really wants, and I'm interested in that process, but I don't think we're up to the time yet, so.
No, and we, we have plenty of time to have further discussions. Councilmember Chu.
Yeah, I would say that if, you know, I haven't changed my mind either, but that's a different story. If, if we're going to get additional information, it's, it's already there. We, we've got several states ahead of us, and in particular, I would like to direct staff to reports from the Rocky Mountain HICA. That's the high-intensive drug trafficking area, which is a federally zoned area in which they bring together law enforcement in a number of different capacities to deal with drug trafficking. But they basically have almost a one-point-zero correlation on the permissiveness at various levels with marijuana to the increase in youth, especially amongst youth. So that, that is our biggest issue, you know, when we discuss this here.
Okay, fine. Thanks. Any other comments?
I do. I put my feelers out, and I met with ten families. They all, they're all very young, they're, they've all have children from four months all the way up to the age of seventeen. I talked to each one individually, and they did not hesitate at all, and they said, "Please, please, do not allow cultivation commercially, do not have retail stores, do not have plants outside." They want to protect their children. And they're all Larkspur residents, and they were very adamant and concerned that if anything, if we ever have a retailer or more than that, that they just don't want it around their children. So it was interesting how they didn't hesitate at all, and they said, "No, none of it here in Larkspur." Go ahead.
And one of the things, the lady who asked about the medical marijuana issue already left, but, you know, although the ordinance to prohibit medical marijuana was done in nineteen ninety-six for Larkspur after Prop 213 was passed, we've had at least one or two iterations where the council has had to reinforce that. And really, for me, what it came down to is that if you're going to use it and dispense it as a prescription drug, then all the processes are already in place for prescription drugs, and it just doesn't exist for medical marijuana. In fact, the police department will tell you that there is a high disproportionate issuance of medical marijuana cards to certain demographics who are using it for recreational purposes.
Okay. Councilmember Hilmer, did you have anything further?
Only an anecdote, which I've been contacted by various interests who would like to have a community discussion about these issues. And invariably, they want to come and make a presentation to our council, which I don't object to. But I, I always offer the same idea, and I've never had anybody take me up on it. But they're always interested in the area around Marin General Hospital. And this is, this was the medical marijuana interests. And they're, they're usually attorneys. And I always suggest the same thing, and I've never had anybody take me up on it, which is to hold a community forum at Marin Catholic High School. And I never have anybody take me up on it. So I, I think that, that tells me that there's not support or enough interest in taking the community conversation to a place where people would show up and actually express themselves, so you can get a real sense of the community feeling about the issue. So I, I think in many ways, you know, we're, we're listening, we're, we're doing what we think is right for our community, and I, and altogether, I, I feel comfortable that we're taking the right process and position on it until we've earned more, and then we may very well end up not allowing it permanently.
And I, and I appreciate those comments.
So let me just ask you, in your experience with these kind of matters, what would be a good for, forum to, to really engage in that kind of conversation?
Well, as I said, I think for the county, I think...
But that's not how it is. We don't have control over Marin Catholic.
Yeah, just wanted to...
No, I think for the county area, I think, I think that would be a good location. And if, if we wanted to have one here, I think a high school gymnasium would be a good location, someplace where we can really hear the, the pulse.
It's a good idea.
And there's, again, plenty of opportunity to have these kinds of...
Yeah, and I, I suspect we will have these opportunities.
So right now, we have a motion on the table. Did I get a second?
I'll, I'll second that.
Okay.
Maybe Larry already did. Did you second? Oh, Larry, Larry seconded.
Okay, so we've got multiple seconds. So can we, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion is passed. That goes on to agenda item number eight, business items. There are none. And I think at that point, we go to agenda item nine, which is to adjourn the meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second?
Say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned.